All the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge. I pledge the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, its full majesty, and by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome everyone to our meeting. The first item is to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented and add any items introduced by unanimous vote. May I have a motion, please?
Move.
John, second. Okay. Do we have any items that anyone would like to introduce? Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion is carried. It is recommended that the board approve the board minutes for the meeting of March thirty-one, two thousand twenty-one, which was a regular board meeting. No, and the regular board meeting of April sixth, two thousand twenty-one, and a special meeting, the annual meeting, held April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. May I have a motion, please?
I don't move.
Allen? And a second, Gene, was that you?
Yeah, it's Ross.
Okay. Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes as they are presented? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That motion carries. Okay, the next item is an appointment item. It is recommended that the board approve the following appointment and contract for the Assistant Superintendent for BOSI's operations and component district services. The motion is to appoint Dr. Aaron Bachniak to the Assistant Superintendent for BOSI's operation and component district services effective September one, two thousand twenty-one, and to approve the contract of the Assistant Superintendent for BOSI's operations and component district services effective September one, two thousand twenty-one through August thirty-one, two thousand twenty-six.
Same motion?
Allen?
Second.
Second. Do we have any discussion regarding the appointment or the contract? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? That motion carries. Welcome, Aaron.
Welcome. We will, in just a little while, we'll still keep doing that. If I can, Dr. Brooks, I'd just like to welcome Dr. Bachniak to our organization effective September one. You know, we really feel like Dr. Bachniak can support us and the momentum we've achieved as he comes on board to fill a considerable void that we continue to discuss with Dr. Hallenforce's retirement. You know, we reorganized our administrative team last, our central administrative team last summer with bringing Mr. DeTragley on as director or as Assistant Superintendent for student services and allowing Dr. Hallenforce to concentrate her efforts on BOSI's operations and the services we provide to component districts, kind of at an opportune time with the expansion of her role and the responsibility she took on leading not just our organization, but the entire region's efforts as our COVID coordinator, so her job expanded in that sense. But what we have arrived at is a terrific solution to her departure with Dr. Bachniak's experience leading the Schenectady City School District for a little over a year and his understanding of school improvement, his vast experience in technology and organizational structures, and his BOSI's experience. One of the things we were very concerned about was losing that knowledge of how BOSI's operates and interacts with our component districts and at the state level. And Dr. Bachniak brings a wealth of experience to our organization through his over ten years at Capital Region BOSI's and NERIP prior to joining Schenectady. So, welcome, Aaron. I don't know if there's anything you'd like to add.
We totally just prepared comments for about an hour or so. I don't know, I'm really, really thrilled to be here. This is such an exciting opportunity for me to know that my next step is going to be back in the area that I grew up, serving districts in the area that I grew up. It's a sense of pride, so I'm really, really glad to be here and so thankful for the opportunity. So, thank you to all of you. September one can't come soon enough.
Excellent.
So, Lori, you threw us a curveball, but I think we put the ball in play anyway with bringing Aaron on board. Aaron has a full-time job, as we well know right now, and he actually has a board meeting of his own. He's welcome to stay as long as he can here tonight, but I do think you need to get back down to Schenectady, so we will be in touch. And again, thank you for agreeing to join us.
Thank you, and I do apologize. I'm going to hang out for just a little bit, and I will have to step out a little really just to get to the Schenectady Board of Education meeting. But thank you.
Pleasure to have you, Lori.
Yeah.
So, we want Aaron to know that Lori set the standard, and I'm not going to mention how many years she's been in the position, but it was a good, long time, so Aaron, we hope you settle in and try to live up to that track record that Lori had in terms of her tenure with us.
I've known Lori for a long time. She has a huge, huge presence. I'm really scared because those are extremely big ideals to fill.
Don't, Aaron, she scares everybody, so don't.
I will do my best this year, but I don't think anyone can fill those shoes.
We agree. Okay, then, we'll move on to business, and I'd like to turn the next part of the meeting over to the reporter, the Assistant Superintendent. Jay, do you want to take it from here?
Great, thank you. So, if Aaron's still in the room, congratulations, Aaron, and welcome to our team. I think everybody knows how I feel about the organization. I love BOSI's, I love HFM, and you're going to be a great partner and part of our team, so welcome, Aaron. So, thank you to the board for this opportunity tonight. We're going to highlight our Career and Technical Education Department. Before we begin, I just want to recognize, you know, the amazing work of our CTE teacher staff and administration for their support of our students, especially during these most challenging times. Mike DeMeza, our CTE principal, and Riley O'Malley, our CTE coordinator, really have forged a great partnership and provided outstanding exemplary leadership. I think I may have joked in a previous meeting, we upgraded both of those positions. So, we upgraded the coordinator in CTE, and then we upgraded the principal in CTE, so they've really done an amazing job and appreciate everything that they've provided for us and our students. So, in addition to having Mike and Riley with us, we are also honored to be joined by two outstanding representatives from CTE. First, I'd like to introduce Rit Santelli. He is our New Visions Education Instructor. Mr. Santelli is probably one of the most respected and revered educators in our region. He started his career in Mohanesson as a teacher, then he left to serve his country in the military. After that, he returned to the classroom at Mohanesson. Then he moved into school administration, served in various roles, Assistant Principal at Mohanesson, Middle School Principal at Glover'sville, High School Principal at Johnstown, and Superintendent at Wheelerville. Upon retiring from public education, he then served as a counselor at the St. Jude's Rehabilitation Center. And we have been blessed to have him with us the past few years, leading our New Visions Education Program and certainly inspiring our next generation of educational leaders. Also joining Mr. Santelli this evening is an outstanding young woman who's a senior from Fonda-Fultonville Central School. She's currently enrolled in the New Visions Education Program. I'd like to introduce Molly O'Tailing. Molly is a tremendous ambassador for career in technical education, and most importantly, she truly is a role model for all young adults. And as Molly pursues her career in teaching, I know she'll inspire and influence the lives of her students, just as Mr. Santelli has done throughout his illustrious career. So, again, I want to welcome Mr. Santelli and Molly this evening, and now I'd just like to turn it over to Mr. DeMeza and Mr. O'Malley, who will facilitate the conversation.
Thanks, Jay. I agree with you that it was an upgrade this year, so, you know, I have to say, this year has definitely been an interesting year for both Riley and I to take over in our current positions, and without the support of Lori, Jay, and Dave, we couldn't have done what we've done. I mean, to be open five days a week from September to get to here, it really, we were, we had open communication at all times with everyone in central admin, and it honestly made everything so much easier in a really challenging situation. And I know that just from COVID perspectives, I've had more conversations with Lori on a Saturday or Sunday than I think she would ever want to have with me, so I think every week we've had a conversation. And, you know, it's definitely been an experience, but we've had great success this year. Just to highlight our CTE across the board, on a typical day, you know, we're around ninety, ninety-two percent participation between remote and in-person, and our teachers are streaming fully in our classrooms, and that's made a huge difference. And even our student success rate, we're looking at, you know, a ninety-six or ninety-seven percent graduation rate this year, which is a little bit of a dip, but honestly, it's really an accomplishment for everything that we've come across. The program that we chose to highlight today is our New Visions Education Program, and like Jay said, you know, Molly and Rit are really two of the best people that we could choose to represent us, you know, in this meeting tonight. So, Molly, can you hear me? I'm new?
Yes, how are you?
I'm good, I'm great. So, Matt, I was just going to talk through a couple of different things with you first, just about CTE, your experience, and what inspires you to participate in career in tech when you were coming into us?
Well, I had always wanted to, I wanted to be a teacher, and so that was always in the back of my mind, but it really helped because my sophomore year to my junior year, I had to transition between two schools, so I moved. And my start of my junior year, it was definitely something that pushed me because it was already scary enough having to start at a new school. I just figured that if I was going to be doing that, I might as well join this program because it was something that I had always planned on doing because my brother actually participated in the programs here, and he always had nothing but nice things to say about it. So, it kind of eased my mind knowing that although I'd be starting at a new school, like this could be kind of a safe place, and maybe I'd have people in my class who I already knew from my previous school, so it was definitely one of my most happy choices I've made in the past couple of years.
That's awesome. That's great. So, you've been in the New Visions Program, you know, you started off as a career as an ed student, we've transitioned it now to a one-year program through the direction of Mr. Santelli. What, can you tell us about some of your experiences, you know, and just, you know, how that's happened, you know, this year, the experiences that you've had?
I would say my experiences this year have been amazing, honestly, considering with everything that's going on, it's definitely one of like the high points in my day, knowing that I can be there and with people who I feel comfortable with and my classmates and everything, but it's also that normalcy of doing what I know I'm going to love to do in the future. And the program, we're allowed to shadow classrooms, whether it be in-person, if that school allows, our home schools, or over, join their Zoom classes, which was something I really didn't think we were going to be able to do this year, given everything that's going on, so it was definitely a high point to know that I'd still get to be doing those things because of the program that I'm in.
That's fantastic. After your experiences just shadowing and seeing, you know, different classrooms and going to different places, has this program inspired you in the direction that you're going to take after you leave us?
I think it's completely solidified it. Everything that I've learned from the past two years, because I was a part of the original class, but mainly this year, it's definitely solidified my wanting to be a teacher, being with the teachers from my homeschool, and even like watching the teachers at CTE and how they interact with the students, it's definitely made me want to become a teacher, and I'm very, my choice.
That's awesome. You know, your situation for us is a little bit different because you are an early admit student, can you talk about what your day looks like?
Well, because of the pandemic, all of my classes are unfortunately all virtual, so it's kind of discouraging to not be able to go in-person for half of my day, but it really, I really get excited at like eleven-thirty when I know it's time to go to CTE and it's time to be in the classroom with a teacher that I'm very comfortable with, and like I get to see all of my classmates, and it's definitely a lot different, and I know it would have been different because I would have been going between the campuses, but I'm just very thankful that even with having all of remote classes, that I do still get to have that in-person experience because that was what I was hoping I would have this year. That's what I was afraid I was going to lose because of participating in early admit, but I'm glad I got to do both, given how each, I don't know what to, like, each system at both of the schools were willing to work with me to make, to ensure that I was still a part of the program.
That's fantastic. That's awesome, Molly. So, what's your plans for next year? You know, I know that we've talked about this individually, would you like to share with the board, you know, what's next for you?
I've actually submitted to SUNY Oswego to be a part of their early childhood education plan, so I'm very excited to be starting there in the fall, and I'm just going to continue to go through the motions, and I'm going to graduate, and after graduation, I hope to get a job right in a school, and I want to complete my masters at the same time I'm working. I'd like to do both at the same time, even though I know it's probably going to wear me down a bit, but I'm very excited for that challenge, and it's just something I know I want to do, and I know it'll make me happy in the long run.
That's fantastic, Molly. You're definitely going to do fantastic, honestly. Last question, and then I'm going to move over to Mr. Santelli. What would you say is the best part of CTE? And what would you tell other students that were considering CTE? Because I know we've actually had Molly for presentations when we've had a parent night at Fonda-Fultonville, and what would you say is the best part of CTE, and what would you share with other students or anyone in our community?
Just the environment of all the teachers, not even your teacher specifically. I have never walked down that hall and felt discouraged by any of the other teachers or any other person at CTE. Everybody is always there with a smile, and it's just a really comfortable place, and I know for a lot of teenagers, it's hard to transition into that. New things, new things is scary, but if anybody ever asked me if they should do CTE, my answer will always be yes, and it will always be a very firm yes, because you will never, I won't say never, but nine out of ten times, your day will be very, very good. It might get a little stressful with whatever you got going on in class, like tests and stuff, but overall, with all the teachers, it's never, I've never once left there feeling discouraged, sad, upset. It's just a really positive environment.
Oh, that's amazing. I lied, I do have one more thing. Molly was, Molly was recognized earlier in the year for the Silent Service Award. Molly, can you tell us a little bit about that? Because it's a huge accomplishment for you, for you to be recognized for that.
I got the Silent Service Award. It was given to Peter Armstrong Foundation, and it's given to students who are, I wouldn't say not recognized, but more unsung heroes for their community, and it's just, although you might not think that you are being recognized for a lot of your efforts, not even at CTE, but just in general, it's given to those who do a lot of community service for the school, but also for their home schools and out-of-school.
Awesome. Congratulations on that award, Molly, it's well deserved. Mr. Santelli, I have just a couple of things for you. So, over the last two years, Mr. Santelli's, you know, been with our program and really has had a profound impact on what we do and the shape of the direction that we were going to take this in the future. So, for those of you that don't know, we did transition from a two-year program to a one-year program, and really had, you know, just made it more targeted for students that are choosing to go into education in the future, and to really have an immersive experience for the students to be able to do that. Obviously, like Molly referenced earlier, with the pandemic, we didn't know what that was going to look like. We didn't know what that was going to look like for any of our programs coming into this, and our districts have really given us open arms to bring students into the classrooms and to be able to have them have the most normal experience possible. We are edging toward normalcy at CTE. The hospitals have recently opened up to us to be able to go back for clinical for both our New Visions Program and our medical assisting program, and those are really positive signs for us, for our students to continue that hands-on experience that really gives them that added value. So, Rit, could you kind of just walk us through, you know, what would be your ideal experience for any of the students entering the New Visions Education Program?
Rit, you're in good mood.
Did we lose Rit? Oh, no, he's there.
He's about sixty steps away from us, he could just walk over.
Molly, you better go help him.
Rit's coming over.
Yeah, I guess, man.
So, we're waiting for Mr. Santelli. Molly, just thank you for not providing a particular answer when Mr. DeMeza asked the question, who, how were you inspired to join CTE? Because I know he wanted you to say it was his presentation when he visited the tenth grader.
I tried coaching her, but, you know, I should have sent her an email on it, just as talking points.
Yeah, thank you for not saying that much.
Hey, Mr. Santelli. You talk about challenges.
So, so.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Rit. So, here's a question for you, because Rit is one of our teachers that is streaming his instruction, and he's functioning in both a hybrid and a remote fashion. So, you know, Rit, can you talk about that, just as a, you know, just as a veteran teacher, just on the transition of getting your tech up and running every single day?
Yeah, the situation, I just felt, looking at the program, because Career as an Ed was a very formidable program, but I just thought there's so many opportunities for these kids to be teachers, specifically teachers, and there's going to be a need for teachers unbelievably. So, we talked about it when Jay was there too, and we discussed the A- Year Program, which would stress not only theory, but going into the practicing of teaching. For example, that young lady Molly put on a class maybe two weeks ago that I looked at Fran Boyer and I said, I'd hire her right now. So, I'm serious about that, that's how good she is. And by the way, they kids think I'm their second grandfather, which is fine, that's not a problem. But the whole thing is, I just want the structure, because they are taking two psychology courses too. They take child psych the first semester, and they let adolescent psych the second. And I did that because I thought, these kids have to know what they're dealing with, whatever level they're in. So, that's with the college as well, it's the college and the high school. So, basically, we do that two days a week, and then we do the teaching and the practice and the lesson planning, and like I said, Fran Boyer has been in helping out with that. The more experience these kids get in teaching and getting up in front of kids, the better it is. I even got a girl with IEP who I never thought would get up. She says to me last time she did her lesson, when can I do my next lesson? So, all these things are really coming to bear, and I think when we had some discussions with people who were visiting, they were kind of excited about that, because it is hands-on in the sense that you're learning how to be a teacher. It's not all theory, you're not learning about foundations of Ed, you'll learn that in college. I want these kids to get a heads up to know, this is how it is to teach, and it's not all the good stuff either, because we go over how to handle tough parents, we do some role-playing with that, in fact, they're going to do that after their internships. So, I try to make it as practical as I can, and like Molly said, I'd like it to be easy and calm and have a place these kids love to come to.
The other day, I actually came across one of our teachers walking me through the hallway, so I walked, came across Ryan England, and Ryan was going up to your room, because Ryan played the part of a difficult parent on a phone call the other day?
Yeah.
So, you know.
He was supposed to be an arrogant parent, and I was supposed to be the teacher, I wanted to show him, the kids were doing their stuff, and I said, hold on, I got to make a phone call. So, I made a phone call, and he wasn't aggressive enough, so I had to be the aggressive one. So, he goes, gee, you're the aggressive teacher. I said, I don't want that kid in this class anymore. And I don't know, just looking at me, but again, I'm trying to show these kids that these are things that we're dealing with, that you're going to, I love teaching, I love teaching, I love education. Fifty-four years I've been in this business, and I loved every minute of it. I say to the kids, I wouldn't change anything about it, I really wouldn't, and especially when you get into the teaching, I say, you close that door, you're your own boss, you have control of those kids, and if you love kids, there's no better occupation, there just isn't.
Rit, what's been the biggest challenge this year with COVID?
That, technology. Riley came up and got me all set up, I said, okay, Riley, I'm sitting, I'm listening to everybody talk, and all of a sudden, Mike asks me a question. Technology is really tough. Sometimes you forget about the remote kids, because you start talking, and you start teaching, and some of the kids are answering stuff, and you kind of forget about them. I think that's a big challenge, but I got to tell you something, my class is probably the easiest to do, because it's not hands-on like autobody or cars or whatever. So, the kids will join in, and they will add into discussions and stuff, but sometimes I forget about it until I hear one of them yell on the speaker. So, I think the technology has been tough, but, you know, by and large, I'll tell you, the teachers aren't complaining, I think the teachers are saying the kids are following right along with it, they really are. They understand the situation we're in, so.
I think one of the things that speaks clearly, Rit, about the experience that you provided is just your attendance on a daily basis, you know, the kids logging in from home, the kids being here in-person, and really just wanting that immersive experience that you've been able to, you know, kind of scaffold on and just build into. And honestly, this is, Rit is officially graduating this year, and we are going to miss him tremendously next year, and we will be posting for that position, for our career as an ed position, and Rit, it has been absolutely the utmost pleasure to be able to work with you, and you've truly had a positive influence on not only the students in your class, but our staff as well. And Molly, next year, we are going to miss you tremendously too. Honestly, you're like a ray of sunshine coming into our building every single day, so it's been an absolute pleasure to have you. So, you know, also, just while we're here, Riley has been an outstanding addition to our team at CTE this year. I couldn't ask for a better partner, and I did work with Jay for nine years, so, you know, obviously, there was some big shoes to fill on the relationship that Jay and I had established in what direction we had taken CTE, and Riley has stepped into that and just really taken off. I mean, I have the utmost confidence in everything that he does on a daily basis, and it's great to be able to do that, especially with what we've had happen this year. And, you know, I think our results in CTE are speaking for themselves this year. Our movement looks strong, we had fifty-seven different presentations to students, remote, in-person, visiting our campus, and, you know, Riley really worked diligently to make sure that the kids had the best possible experience every single time they stepped foot on our campus, so. It's for us.
Can I just say something, Riley, I'm sorry?
Yeah, of course.
Throwing kudos, I want to go home, that's fine. Throwing kudos your way, I'm telling you, I've had a lot of districts in this area, I love this area, you've got the best in BOSI's right now, you really do, and I'm not just saying that. You are very fortunate to have leadership you have all the way through, and that's why I stayed, believe me. Now, Rit, before you go, I want to ask Molly, Riley, and Mike a question and see what their answers are. Do you think he's really going to stay retired this time?
We've tried.
I've known him for a little while, and he just keeps on turning up in places where I am.
If I were sixty-five, I'd go ten more years. I'm seventy-five, I don't know, I can go ten more years.
Thank you, Rit.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rit. Thanks, Rit. Any questions for Riley or me, just about CTE, you know, some of our things that happened this year, anything in general? All right. Thank you very much, everyone, for allowing us to present today, to showcase this program, and for allowing Molly and Rit to be here. I do feel fortunate to be able to work here every single day, and I tell everyone that I do love coming to work. It's a great place, and this, I'm going to be finishing my ninth year here, and, you know, obviously, I do thank the board for this opportunity to lead CTE, especially in one of the most challenging times in education. It's been, it's been an interesting year, but it's definitely been a year of growth, so thank you so much.
Mike and Riley, thank you, Molly, thank you for joining us. Rit, can you still hear me?
No, I think you're settled.
Well, I, you know, I gave Rit... Well, I, you know, I I gave Rick great platitudes and and latitude, you know, just saying how wonderfully as a, as an educator. I just questioned his judgment because he asked Riley for technical support. And if you're not familiar with the situation, I think I may have mentioned it before, when Riley interviewed virtually with us, he was ten minutes late because he couldn't get on his technology at home. But I will also tell you, it was amazing how he transitioned through that. And which could have been very disconcerting and nerve wracking, it was as if he didn't miss, miss a beat, so.
Listen, since she's not here and I'm in a safe space, it was one hundred percent my wife's fault. She's a third grade teacher and she was zooming out to her kids during my interview, so I lost Wi-Fi. So that's, that's my story, I'm sticking to it, please don't give her the recording of this meeting.
Thank you.
So we want to say thanks to everyone for sharing your, that piece of this, of the Bosse story with us. I think for, speaking for the board, it's reports like this that keep us connected with really why we're here. And I think it's, Dave and I had talked a while ago about, you know, making a regular part of our meeting, the showcasing of the work that you're doing as adults and particularly Molly inviting students like you. And I think as, you know, speaking as a board member, it really connects, a lot of times as a board member, it's hard to see that what we're doing really impacts kids. But when we bring students to our meetings and we bring you guys to our meetings, I think it motivates us to continue doing the work that we're doing. So I want to say thanks for all the work that you're doing and I know it's been a difficult year. And we're looking forward to a, a return to normal or creation or whatever is going to be normal next year. And we wish you a good slide into the summer season here. So thanks, everyone, for for sharing with us tonight.
Thanks, Dr. Brooks.
Thank you.
Moving on in our agenda, we'd like to turn this part of the meeting over to Lori and have her talk about the things that she's been working on. Lori?
Hi, everybody. I see that Aaron, Dr. Boshniak already snuck out to go to his next meeting, but I I will welcome him to this organization. I think he will be a, a marvelous addition to the leadership team here. So kudos all around to making sure that happened for this organization. Obviously, I have been here as Dr. Brooks didn't want to say about my tenure, my length of tenure here, but since I started when I was ten, it doesn't matter how many years ago it was. And and as Jay said too, this is obviously, my heart has been devoted to this organization for years. And I, I'm looking forward to learning about what, what changes will be made as, as the future progresses. So I wanted to just give a, a little update this evening about our community school resources COSER. So Dave has spoken to you about it before and I've spoken to you about it before as well. So that particular service was approved for us on just this past March and it's only been operational in the state since 2017. So we're, we're, we're in on the, we're in on the loop on, on getting programs available. So the, the primary purpose of the service is to provide co-located or school-linked services for academic health, mental health, nutrition, counseling, legal, other services that the districts might wish to request. All of it focused on helping students and families, both in terms of academics for children and interactions, any kind of impact that families can have to help support their children to be successful at school in, in concert with these organizations that will be providing services. So I wanted to tell you where we are now and where we're going. So currently, we have four districts that are participating through that COSER with Berkshire Farms Center and Services for Youth. We have four districts and they're utilizing two of Berkshire Farms' programs. One is called Home Run, which is a school-based program. So they send staff into the schools to work with children to help prevent out of home placements. So the work is to try and keep the children in their home in a more positive way. So they're having school-related issues sometimes or difficulties just with general family functioning. So that the districts are helping to support with Berkshire Farms. This is all coordinated also with the County Department of Social Services. So we're all partnering to help support the families and the students. The other program that the districts are using is called Turnabout. And Turnabout is a junior, senior high school program and it's about truancy prevention. So it really focuses on children who are missing a lot of school and who are at risk probably for dropping out because of poor school attendance. So we're excited that we are able to coordinate those services with our districts to support the students. Two of our districts are participating in a contract that the board approved a few months ago with Nurse Connections, if you recall. And they are actually contracting with Nurse Connections for COVID-19 testing of their students. So we were able to facilitate that contract for those districts and I'm, I'm happy that they're able to use the services here and, and receive aid. Recently, we sent out a survey to the districts about whether or not they were interested in having a medical director for their district through this COSER. So we are developing, I'm working with Kathy Lewis very closely on this. We've received some samples of RFPs from some other Bosse's who have this COSER and have done an RFP for medical director. My, my plan is that we will have that awarded, out and awarded for the beginning of the school year. So that will all be in place for our districts. Right now, we have eight districts who have indicated that they are interested in being part of the RFP and having that service through the Community Schools COSER. So I'm excited about that. The last piece I wanted to share with you is David and I spent a little bit of time, about an hour, I think, last Tuesday, with a mobile telemed group. And we were, we were given an opportunity to see what kind of service they are offering in terms of telehealth that would be provided through Community Schools COSER for students and staff if they wish to participate in actually having medical support. So they bring a cart into the school, there is a charge for each cart in each building. A student comes down to the nurse, in the nurse's office, the, a student comes down, isn't feeling well. We already have permission, the school has permission for the student to be seen by a medical health professional through this telehealth option. The nurse calls and says, I've got Joey down here, he's not feeling well, we'd like to set up an appointment. So within ten or fifteen minutes, they will call the number and beam in, just like we're doing with you tonight, to check on the two, the student, ask questions, find out what's going on. They can prescribe medication, they can prescribe further tests, they have direct communication with the child's family, their family physician. So the family physician knows exactly what was happening and what was going on through this screening process on, on the screen, the telemed. They have that virtual visit where they are assessed and diagnosed by a medical professional. So we are taking that information to the superintendents at the May twentieth meeting to see if people might be interested in doing, doing, providing this service to their students and or their staff through the Community Schools COSER. Right now, there are two Bosse's who are using this particular service that we are aware of. And the interesting part is, other than the cart, the, there is no other cost to the district. The, the service for the actual health consult is billed directly by telemed. So the school's not involved with this piece of it at all, they bill the child's insurance directly. So that just goes directly, the parents know and they have approved that ahead of time. So while we just started a, a few months ago and have just been talking really this year with our districts about the Community Schools COSER, it's expanding just as we, we do more and more every month and providing services. I had a request from one of our superintendents earlier this week about mental health support. We haven't flushed that out, we haven't had a follow-up meeting yet, but I think we'll see more and more of that as we bring students back to school as well. So I'll pause there. Dave, I wasn't sure if you wanted to add anything about any of those pieces, or the telemed in particular, or if there are any questions.
Well, I'm just really pleased with, with the progress that you've been able to make and engage with, with our component partners. I'm very familiar with those Berkshire programs. The, the, the one that you spoke of, Home Run, is really an early intervention at the elementary level where you identify ten families that, that need, need of intervention because they, they need, require services, the kids may be in danger of becoming involved with, with the juvenile justice system. But it's a twelve-month position as well. So let's just think about, and, and fifty percent of it is funded by the county. And what we're talking about doing with the, with the Community Schools COSER is providing an opportunity for them to get reimbursement for a portion of the other fifty percent. In the district that I came from, that would mean eighty percent of that. So you'd be essentially getting a full-time social worker to support ten needy families for twelve months a year for about ten percent of the cost after you factor in the county share and the reimbursement that, that they'll achieve from being run, run through the Bosse's. So really, and, and that will allow them to, to, to maybe amplify their efforts or free up money to, to do something else. So really, I, I think that this is a, a very, very appropriate COSER for us to be running in this region where, you know, we, we see the, the dire need to, to support social and emotional development of our, of our students. And I think we're going to find the question that you just had about mental health services, I think it's going to be a similar solution without the, the county share. But I think we're going to be able to, to achieve reimbursement for contracts, frankly, that districts are already engaging with. So, so it really will help them to become much more, much more efficient with their resources. So wonderful start with this, Lori.
Great, and I appreciate the opportunity to share with you where we are because I do think it's exciting, it's been a very difficult year, especially, I think, for children and their families, with so many children at home and parents really not knowing somehow, sometimes how to manage. And I, I think there's been an escalation in a lot of mental health issues, we read about it all of the time in the, in the papers, we hear about it on the news. So I think we will see that piece growing also as we move into the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. But I, I always appreciate an opportunity to speak about programs with the board, thank you.
Anyone have any questions for Lori, your comments? Okay, as always, Lori, thanks.
You're welcome.
We want to now move to the next portion of our agenda, which is the report from the district superintendent, Dave.
Thank you. And I actually previewed part of my report by issuing some commentary there on Community Schools COSER. In my report, it's simply two parts to again, just review and touch base on progress we've made with, with our goals that, that we've set for twenty twenty-one and then where we're headed in twenty-one, twenty-two to continue the, the momentum. I think we have to, to be seizing on the momentum to drive goals and actions that are in line with our, with our mission. So three goal areas essentially this year that, that we focused on. And you can see I put the caveat, other partnership work, I could elaborate on it more. But essentially, we, we talked about partnership, advocacy and leadership and also internal efficiencies and effectiveness. You know, we focused in, it was, it was very logical to focus in on working with our Department of Health this year. I, I briefed you on some of the work last year, then we're just gonna move through these slides as, as a review and then really talk about where I think we need to go to prepare for next year. Similar with, with the safety initiatives with law enforcement, I will tell you, you know, we, we don't always agree on everything with, with, with our, with our partners in, in public health and in law enforcement, but we have a very honest, productive relationship with them. And, and they're, you know, I feel like that in both, both, both realms, there are people there we can really depend on. And Lori just talked a great night about some partnership work that, that we're doing with the Community Schools COSER and there's certainly an overlap with, with advocacy there. Advocacy and leadership, we, we have begun to, to engage with, with some steps to support our goal to build awareness and capacity internally and in the region around unconscious biases. You know, it's a, it's a first step where we're going, it's an investigation of our own behavior, behaviors and, and hidden biases. And I can tell you, it's been, been telling for, for me, but just to give you an update, we have started our book study. We do have a community activist who's partnering with us, as well as one of our component districts with, with a couple of their administrators. And our plan is to, after this dry run with this book study, review how we went about it. And you saw, you know, Tara, Tara gave you an overview of it last month. And we plan to, to roll it out as something that we can offer to our staff and to the region this summer. And again, supporting boards and leaders in the, in the region and many other leadership and advocacy efforts. I think in terms of the legislative advocacy that we were a part of and some of the, you may recall some of the letters that were written. There is another one that we are partnering with, which we Bosse's, Capital Region Bosse's and Questar Bosse's on a letter that we are going to send to state education leaders, legislative leaders, Department of Health to produce and deliver some detailed guidance as to what the expectations will be around opening school in the fall so we can plan accordingly. And the last goal area. Locky tonight. Internal efficiencies and effectiveness. And we sat here tonight, I, I spoke a bit with you about how we reorganized last summer. We continue to communicate and, and, and identify where responsibilities lie within our organizational structure. And, and that will continue to evolve as we account for Dr. Hallenforst's departure. And, you know, we, we also are making a concerted effort to, to communicate through, through the lens and through the language of the organizational goals and the vision and mission that we developed last year. And Jay's gonna jump in in a minute to talk about how he's gone about doing this with, with his, his program leadership. And I did notice when I transitioned to the next slide, I think it's a little messy, so bear with me. So moving to a discussion of organizational goals and setting the direction so that we can continue to grow. I do believe we've continued to grow one thing, one area I think we need to focus on, though, while I believe we are growing, I think we can do a better job and, and have to in considering how do we know we're grown? And, and are we measuring it in a meaningful way that indicates that our, that our efforts are effective or need to be recalibrated? But I think, you know, it's, it's a case of don't let, don't let perfect be the enemy of good. We, 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 we are entering into an area where I really think we can perform very highly and intentionally. So alignment of, of program planning, when I say program planning, these are the, the areas, for the most part, that Jay oversees, but certainly, you know, our internal departments as well, you can substitute department there. I, I do believe that we have started, I want to take the bottom part off because this is where I wanted Jay to, to speak a little bit about his efforts with, with his teams to align the, the, the actions within the programs to the organizational goals that we have. the actions within the programs to the organizational goals that we have been working with. So Jay, I don't know if you want to make a couple of comments?
Yes, thank you. So I just want to revisit what, Dave, what you said back in January of 2020, your initiative to really engage our component districts and our component superintendents on our vision, our mission, who we are and what we do as a BOCs. I think we can't say enough about how that's positioned us well to really do what we say, partner, advocate and leader. Because of that work, now we are truly aligning not only the BOCs organizational goals, but drilling down to our departments, respective departments, and how are we aligning what we do in those departments with those areas of focus, partnership, leadership, program effectiveness and efficiency. And I also think it's important to know that Kathy and her team in the business office are a tremendous partner with us, because they look, they don't look at dollars only, they look at students, they look at programs. And it's how can we make things happen? And they are a big part of this, which I think is important to state, because they are a great partner with us. So one of the things that we are doing, we started this in probably, I started with our administrators in September, taking those three areas and asking our program leadership to identify what they are doing this year that aligns with those three areas. And having, and drawing back to that, whenever they have initiatives that they are planning, whatever they're doing on a daily basis, how does it fall into those areas and in those overarching goals that we have? What I plan to do at the end of this year, whether it's in June or the July board meeting, is report to our board on the progress that each of our departments has made in these three areas. So I look forward to doing that and sharing that information with you.
And I also want to emphasize that it's our intention to celebrate that we, you know, yes, we're making progress, but to move forward in a way in 21-22 where we are actually creating strategic measurable goals and corresponding action plans that are driven by the direction that the board sets. So I think we can get to the point where we really are intentional, strategic and confident in knowing whether or not we've been successful. This year, we've been, you know, like I think, I don't think I can say it better than we, we've been good, but not perfect. We didn't let perfect get in the way of trying. That doesn't mean that we think we've got it all figured out, I guess. So I'll continue sharing. So how are we going to go about doing that? Those of you who may or may not recall, boy, I did an awful lot of preparation as I came in to interview with the board. I had spoken with you a bit about the idea of identifying areas that we can use, that we can leverage to improvement. I talked about improvement levers. And I borrowed that language from a professor at SUNY Albany who heads up a project known as the New York Kids Project. And what the New York Kids Project does is it identifies outlier schools in New York, in New York State. And what I mean by outliers are odds beating schools who outperform what would be expected given their circumstance. And using their research to identify possible levers that we could use to improve. All of their work is grounded in improvement science. They have a SMART goal framework. And this summer, we are planning to take those program teams and immerse them in a two-day institute with Dr. Kristen Wilcox and this New York Kids Project. And just project for one second, if it'll come up, that screen, and here we go again with the same thing I, there it is. So you can see, this is the New York Kids homepage at the University of Albany. And just what I want to point out to you is, they really focus on three areas. This research around odds beating schools, how to improve, and then how to track your performance, and I'm not projecting them. So let me stop sharing. And let me share again. So this is the New York Kids Project homepage. And what I spoke about, this idea of research around New York schools that have beaten the odds, the resources you can use to plan improvement and then to perform or to track your performance. And within that frame, you know, their framework, I just want to show you, they've done case studies around pertinent topics for many, many years. You can see this first one is college and career readiness at the secondary level. And those are all New York case studies. Odds beating around literacy, oop, it just passed it. Role of school district leaders, engaging families. So there are all these, all these areas of research that we can go in and compare our practice. Now, they're not BOCs, but they're talking about practices within their organizations that can be replicated or leveraged to lead to improvement. And then they train teams in a goal-setting and action-planning model, and also have strategies for how to track your performance. So that is, to give you an idea, where I believe we are headed internally, but all of this needs to be driven by the work of the board and the goals and the direction that we set. So what I would like to do, if the board is agreeable, is to survey you prior to our next meeting about our current goal categories. I think our current goal categories are absolutely connected to our mission, vision and core beliefs. There may be areas to add, there may be areas that maybe we want to reflect on if we need to continue, or there may be areas we simply need to adjust. And I think at the May board meeting, rather than wait until the July meeting to start to identify goal areas, because last year, I think we didn't end up adopting probably until September. I wanted to get a little earlier start, and I also wanted to seize on Alan and Jim and make them do a little more work before they left us. So I put it out to the board, I mean, that's really the extent of my report. If you want to have some discussion around what we've done this year around goals, or if you think that me surveying the board is a good idea and that can drive our conversation
I think the survey is a good idea. I agree. You know, give us a chance to kind of think about it before then, rather than just, you know, get into discussion tonight. I think the better discussion will be when you can share back the results of the survey next meeting, or Jim, whenever you decide to do that. That's my view.
I agree.
Okay, that's it, Dr. Siskin?
That's it for me.
Okay, then we're going to move on to the items of business in our meeting. The first order of business is the personnel items. It's our practice to approve personnel items as a consent agenda item. So I would look for a motion to act on the recommendations as presented to you in items A through I of personnel number eight. Any motion, please?
I'll move in.
John, second?
Second.
Gus? Any discussion of any of the personnel items? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion, those motions carry. Moving on to business items, we have Kathy's bit of business, we've got a real list before us, but we'll knock those off one at a time. The first item is the Claims Auditor Report, and it's recommended that the board approve the Claims Auditor Report for the period of March 3, 2021 through March 31, 2021. We have a motion, please?
Make a motion.
Alan, second?
Second.
Do we have any questions for Kathy regarding the Claims Auditor Report? Or any comments? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? The motion carries. The next item is the Treasurers' Report, and it is recommended that the board accept the Treasurers' Report for the period of March 1, 2021 through March 31, 2021. We have a motion, please? Gus? Do we have a second? Alan? Do we have any questions for Kathy regarding the Treasurers' Report? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. The next item is the Extra Class Report, and it is recommended that the board approve the March 2021 Extra Class Report as submitted and closed in our documents. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll move.
John, do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll go with Carm. Do we have any questions? Comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? The motion carries. The next is the acceptance of a grant, and it is recommended that the board accept the following grant funds and authorize the suitable appropriation and expenditure pursuant to state education department and/or local approvals, and it's for a school library system grant of $9,186. Could we have a motion to approve? Gus? Second, Alan? Anyone have any questions regarding the School Library System Grant? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. The next item has to do with three recommendations for and revised requests for proposals or requests for bids. And it is recommended that pursuant to the competitive bidding process, the board accept the RFP extension recommendation and the revised RFP recommendations as noted by memorandum from the purchasing officer in the following areas. The first was in legal counsel, where it is recommended that we extend that contract. The other two are requests for bids, and it is designated that the vendors were not able to maintain the current pricing as a recommendation, as it is that we rescind the order for U.S. Foods and U.S. Foods, those two items. Do we have a motion, please?
I'll move.
John, and a second?
Second.
Alan? Anyone have any questions for Kathy about those? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. Now we have the recommendation that the board accept the district superintendent's credit card summary for the period of January 1, 2021 through March 31, 2021.
Make a motion.
Alan made the motion, may we have a second?
I'll second.
John? Anyone have any questions regarding how Dave was spending our money? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? That motion carries. It is recommended that the board authorize the district superintendent to execute the intermunicipal agreement by and between the HFM BOCs and Questar III to provide HFM BOCs with internal audit services and a financial risk assessment update for the school year 2021 through 2022. May we have a motion, please?
I'll move.
John, and a second? Gus? Anyone have any questions regarding the internal audit? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. The next item on the business agenda is, it is recommended that the board authorizes the district superintendent to execute the service agreement by and between HFM BOCs and the Group Management Services, Inc., to perform services as part of its standard program of unemployment insurance cost control and human resource management program. A motion, please?
I'll make a motion.
Gus?
I'll follow second.
And John? Anyone have any questions regarding this? Lori, I have one question, because I saw your recent email regarding the unemployment fraud that seems to be existing. Does this, does this contract, or is there any involvement in terms of providing information to affected employees and so forth?
So I'm going to turn that over, Dr. Brooks, to Kathy Lewis. She's been involved with that. I think Jay had a claim, a fraudulent one. I had one, we had other staff who had received interesting emails. Mine looked very official from the New York State Department of Labor, but it wasn't from them, and I went and did everything that Jay at Miller and Aaron, I know Aaron Flynn had sent some information out to, and we had shared it with some staff. But Kath, do you want to give us a little update?
Yep, they help us through this process when someone is flagged in the organization so we can go to them and ask them for their opinion. They deal with this day in and day out. And they also help us with the claims that are valid also. So they work with us on a regular basis. We have a point person, Jay at Miller, in the business office that works with them regularly.
So what I'm believing is, it wasn't just our BOCs that seems to have been targeted, right? Is that it?
I know a number of people.
State-wide thing?
Correct. There are, there have been listserv messages with component districts and also with the other BOCs, they're all seeing the issues pop up in their organizations.
I understand, that's good hearing, but it's pretty heavy.
Really?
Yeah.
So when I heard Lori was applying for unemployment insurance, I was beginning to worry, Lori. Okay, thanks both of you for that report. I don't believe we voted on that, right? Christine, okay, all those in favor of this recommendation, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed? The motion carries. The next item recommends the resolution of the Board of Educational Cooperative Services Cooperative Purchasing School Year 2021-22, and the resolution of the Board Generic School Year 2021-22 with Delaware, Chinango, Madison, Otsigo BOCs effective July 1, 2021, and through June 30, 2022. May I have a motion for that one?
I'll move in.
I'll move.
Okay, and that's for cooperative purchasing. May we have a second, please?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? That motion carries. The next item recommends that the board authorize the district superintendent to execute the renewal agreement for health insurance plans, PPO and HDEPO, with Empire Blue Cross for the contract period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022.
I'll make a motion.
Alan, and a second?
Second.
Jane? Do we have any discussion of this? Jane?
Just a second.
Jane, you're second. Do we have any discussion on this? Any discussion on this agenda item before we move to vote? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Now we look at dental insurance, and it's recommended that the board authorize Delta Dental to provide dental benefits effective July 1, Dental to provide dental benefits effective July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022 at the same rates as the 2021 school year. May we have a motion, please?
I'll move that.
John, and a second?
Second.
Jane? Anyone have any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? That motion carries. The next motion is for Digital Health Services, and it's recommended that the board authorize the District Superintendent to execute the agreement by and between the HFM BOCSs and UCM Digital Health to provide telemedicine benefits to employees effective July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. May we have a motion, please?
I'll move it.
Okay, Jane, and a second?
Second.
Alan? Do you have any questions on this program or this motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? That motion carries. The next item has to do with budget transfers, and it's recommended that the board accept the budgetary transfers through March 31, 2021 as authorized by the Chief Financial Officer. A motion, please?
I'll move that.
John, and a second?
Second.
And anyone have any questions? Comments? Okay, all in favor of approving the budget transfers, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? And any opposed? The motion carries. Next, we're looking at budget adjustments. It's recommended that the board approve the budget adjustments through March 31, 2021 as submitted by the Chief Financial Officer. Motion, please?
I'll move that motion.
Okay, Jane, and a second? Gus? Anyone have any questions about the budget adjustments? Okay, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? That motion carries. I don't know about you guys, but I'm wanting Kathy Lewis to take a break next month or take a few days off, Kathy, and shorten up our meeting a little bit. The next item is the Independent Contractor Services Agreement with Ronald Legrand. It's recommended that the board authorize the District Superintendent to execute the Independent Contractor Services Agreement by and between the HFM BOCSs and Ronald Legrand to provide sign language interpretive services remotely or in person effective April 30, 2021 through June 30, 2021.
I'll move.
Okay, John, and a second?
Second.
Alan? Anybody have any questions? I'm assuming that was a difficult one to find, right? What's that? I hope it, yeah, I hope we gave a move. I know. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Next, it's recommended that the board authorize the District Superintendent to execute the services agreement by and between HFM BOCSs and Graybar Electric Company to install two Category 6 cables to four door locations by June 30, 2021. A motion, please?
Make the motion.
Alan, second?
I'll follow second.
John? Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, Dave, what's that all about, you know?
Oh, the door contacts?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just.
The security thing that they're setting up?
I think it's bringing them up to speed. I don't know. Kath, do you want to run with that?
Yep, so part of our own upgrade that we just have just completed, part of that we bought new cameras and a locking system for the exterior, the main doors for the building, and this will complete that project because we need some of the area to be rewired in order to be able to utilize that equipment.
Good deal.
Probably more like that coming in the coming months with some of the discussions that we've been having as an executive team. Maybe you're uncovering some areas that we want to harden up a little bit.
Today, these days, it's good.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then, being done, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? That motion carries. The next motion is a recommendation that the board authorizes the District Superintendent to execute the NCAC agreement by and between HFM BOCSs and Idemia to provide authorization codes required to submit to a fingerprint-based background check through the New York Civil Fingerprint Vendor Managed Network Program. So we need a motion?
I'll move that.
John, and a second? Gus, we got you. Anybody have any questions on what that all means? I do. Kathy, you want to explain that one?
So earlier in the meeting, you approved an MOA with some of our units that will allow us to use this contract. This is essentially allowing us to pay for fingerprinting for our successful candidates in order to be employed at the BOCSs, and so we will be able to pay for their fingerprinting. And then the MOAs also indicated that if they, for whatever reason, leave the BOCSs prior to being employed for a year, that we will then get reimbursed from the employee for a prorated amount depending on how long they're actually with us.
Okay, thanks. It was interesting today, I was talking to one of the component superintendents about hiring bus drivers, and they were, he was discussing what their district was considering to try to, if you remember, we went to our employees and suggested a pay increase to try to keep them with us, but he was suggesting the other inducements that districts are considering, you know, for example, if you refer a friend and bring them in, we're going to give you a bounty in a sense, or, you know, I mean, people just looking to compete for.
Right. Any way to get more drive.
Yeah.
And this was a real barrier. I mean, we would lose employees because they didn't want to front the money.
Sure. Sure.
So.
Yep. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? That motion carries. The next item is that it is recommended that the board authorize the District Superintendent to execute the proposal by and between the HFM BOCSs and Safe Fleet to provide onsite technician service for school bus cameras for two days by June 30, 2021. May I have a motion, please?
I'll move.
John, and a second?
Second.
Alan? Anybody have any questions regarding this proposal? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? That motion carries. The next item, it is recommended that the board approve six agreements by and between the Montgomery County Department of Social Services and the Hamilton-Felden Montgomery BOCSs to provide 2021 home run and/or turnabout prevention programs for the following school districts, Greater Amsterdam, two programs for Plain District, two programs, Oppenheim, I'm afraid, to St. Johnsville School District, one program, and Kennedy-Harry Central School District, one program, effective January 1, 2021 through December 31, 2021. May we have a motion, please?
So move.
John, and a second? Carm? Anybody have any questions? I believe this was related to Laurie's earlier presentation, but anyone have any, want any more elaboration? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Finally, it is recommended that the board authorize the District Superintendent to execute the agreement by and between the HFM BOCSs and Kickboard, Inc., for purchase of Kickboard Platform and Services through June 30, 2022. May I have a motion, please?
Motion?
I'll move. Second.
Okay, so go, Jane, and then, John? Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, with Kickboard.
Yeah. Elaborate a little bit on that. Laura, you want to take that one?
I can, or Jay can. Jay, do you want to talk about it for Eterondoc Academy?
Yeah, so it's part of, it's part of their positive behavior supports and helps the, it's proactive in taking behaviors proactively rather than a punitive perspective, and it's a way to support the teachers, students, in keeping track of those activities, those positive things that are going on in the community, or in the school community. So it's really part of that culture shift that Chris Carrioto and Brian Garrity are leading in ADP.
So Jay, is it tracking the data associated with PBIS?
It's a nice way to, it's an accurate way to take something that often is subjective and get some data around how things are going with something like PBIS.
Hi, anyone have any other questions? Okay, all those in favor of Kickboard, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? That motion carries. In other business, we have two policy actions. The first is the first reading of policies. It is recommended that the board accept the following policies at first, as first readings, Policy 6301, Benefits, Non-Representative Employees, Revised, Policy 4600.1, Extra Classroom Activity Funds, and Policy 4600.2, Duties of the Faculty Auditor of Extra Classroom Activity Funds. So we need a motion to enter those as first reading?
So move.
Jane, thank you, and a second?
I'll second.
John, anyone have any questions on this first reading of these policies? Okay, they will show back up next month. So without any questions, I would call for a vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Those are accepted as first readings. The second reading, this policy, we saw a month ago, and it's recommended that the board accept the revised policy as second reading and adopt it, and it is Policy 0010, Equal Opportunity and Prohibition of Discrimination and Harassment, including sexual harassment. May we have a motion to?
I'll move that.
Adopt, John, and a second, please? I think it was Gus, or was it Carm?
Carm.
Anybody have any questions on this before we adopt? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries. I'll tell you what, when we get rid of these masks, I may not be out of breath at the end of that.
Drink of water.
This is pretty good. I've tried to drink my coffee through my mask three times. The shirt was clean when I got here. Okay, now we're up to board member comments and reports. Do we have any board members who want to weigh in on anything?
I do. I'd like to speak a little bit about the Health Insurance Committee. As you know, each employee group is represented on that committee, and I as a board member, and I think Jim comes often to the meeting when he can to speak with all the representatives of all the different groups. We've been working together for several years, and each time we meet, I'm more than pleased with the improvement and the confidence and the trust that exists in that committee. Everyone has an equal voice, and they're good listeners and good reporters back to their own groups. Things move along very well, and when we met last week, I think we came to a point where I just stood back and said, this is so good, I can't believe it, because we come to the point where we realize there's some things that we really need to do, and discussed it fully with Boushee and Clark, who are our insurance providers, or whatever they're called, I forgot what they're called. But we came to the point where we realized we really need to have lots of information, even though they do their utmost to keep everyone informed. So as a result of that, I think we're going to see some changes in the way we provide information to all people who are involved within insurance. Christine has come up with some ideas that we want to have a publication, some mobile apps for people to use if they want some information on the insurance plan that we have and so forth. And we also realize that people are very good at finding answers if they know where to look. So if we provide the places, they'll just get there, and then their questions can be answered sometimes in that fashion, and when they can't, they will probably be using their representative to bring those questions to the committee to discuss. Boushee and Clark want to do as much as they can to make that possible, and as a committee, we want to know that we can maximize the coverage, but we also know we have to look at what it's going to cost to do it. This year looks like it's going to be in good shape, but we need to be cautious about what we're going to be looking at for next year. And we're planning to address some of those issues by scheduling our meetings every other month going forward. And if you have any questions, or if Dr. Ziskin wishes to add anything, please go ahead.
I think you really captured it, Jane. I guess what I would just add was on that point about, you know, we want to maximize coverage, but also contain costs, because that's the goal of the committee, and we're, you know, we're in the first year still with Empire, and they came back initially with a rate increase much higher than what we ultimately agreed to, and it was in the name of we want to continue to partner with you. And the reason, I guess Jane has cautioned, and it was the topic of discussion, and I would echo that, is, Christine, I think their initial increase was like?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, and we arrived at 4.9, which is where we need to be to not change the employee contribution. And he said, well, just know, unless we change our behaviors, that 7% is not going away. We can expect to see that and next year's increase. So that's what we're going to, we're going to look at, what can we do? Because the whole idea of this arrangement is to promote behaviors that lead to cost efficiencies. So we're going to rededicate ourselves to that.
Okay. Any other board comments or reports? Thanks, Jane.
Thanks, Dean.
Anyone else have anything? There's just two things that I have. That is that annually, we're required to evaluate Dr. Ziskin's performance, and we've used a form that goes way back to Dr. Michelle, if you remember my Survey Monkey form. We're looking at revising that this year, and I would like to bring up, I think we can have it by the May meeting. Dave has been meeting with his, with the commissioner and his fellow district superintendents, and there's some impetus to require a particular focus in the evaluation, and we don't want to use an old form and then have to go back out. So Dave and I would work together to be sure that we sharpen up our form, and I have that ready so that we can evaluate David in the June timeframe. That would be one thing. And then I think the other thing that, I know Jane and I kicked around a little bit when we did our agenda planning meeting, is the idea that maybe this year is a good year for us to evaluate our own performance as a board. You know, we're sort of at an interesting time with Alan leaving and Jim leaving, and sadly, kind of looking at the fact that our and sadly, kind of looking at the, the fact that our board, our board will have new members, but we hope that it stays the same. And I think kind of looking at our, by, by what I mean by stays the same, it stays the culture that we've been, that we've maintained over the years where, you know, really is a, I think a privilege to operate on the board. Alan, you're part of that and Jim has been for years. So I think if we can find a good method of, you know, kind of taking a look at how we operate and what is it that we do that makes us successful? I think it'd be really useful when we bring in two new board members and try to help them to, you know, join a culture that already exists on our board. So for the May meeting, if we can take a few minutes, we would look at those two items specifically, I think, and it would help Dave to give him some feedback and have the opportunity for the people who we see on the screen every year to give us feedback and for us to comment on our own performance. So those would be two items. Any other announcements from anyone? We have two upcoming meetings in May. There is at your seat a invitation to the PTAC completion ceremony, which is going to be held on May 25th at 6:00 PM at FMCC with a rain date for May 27. And we have our regular board meeting at 5:00 PM, either virtually or here, on May 26 at 5:00 PM. The only other item we have is we do have the need to, to hold a brief executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person. So I would like to recommend that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussing the employment history of a particular person. We have a motion?
I'll move that.
John, may we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay, we are going into executive session then at 6:33.
Laurie and Jay and Kathy, can you remain? It's, it's going to be brief.
Okay, we're, we are back in open session and the only remaining item is the motion to adjourn.
I'd make the motion, meeting be adjourned.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a great month, everybody.